I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the Town of Pecos City Regular City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 24th, 2025, and it is 5:30 PM. At this time, we're going to have an indication from Councilman Graham in the fight of allegiance to the Councilman Arona.
Father, thank you for this opportunity to come before you and just the positions that you put us in, the city, thank you bless the city, Father. We just ask for your guidance and direction to lead this city and work through us, Father, through, as you point out your Holy Spirit upon us, everybody, employees here, that you protect them and just help them to grow and to mature and to light the voids, Father. Again, just thank you for this opportunity and this purpose in Jesus' name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
I wanted to say something prayer about that coming for him, he was not in very good shape right now, y'all keep him in prayers and we appreciate it.
At this time, we're going to open the floor for public comments. As a reminder, this is a time for residents to share with the council any comments, concerns, or complaints that they have. It is asked that each person limit their time to three minutes as we have several scheduled agenda items we tend to. For record keeping purposes, please state your name when you come up to the podium. And then also remind you that we cannot respond as a council at this time. And then also, if you have your cell phones, please make sure they're on site. Are there any public comments?
My name is Olga Flores, Maria Olga Flores. I've lived here all my life. Anyway, I know I've brought this issue up a lot, about the noise, amending the noise ordinance. I see it's here on number seven today, so I just hope that we get to resolve this issue once and for all. And it's like I keep saying, we're not wanting to put anybody out of business, that's not our goal. We just want a quiet night's rest, seven days a week, a good night's rest, and thank you for everything.
Any other public comments at this time?
I'd like to add one if nobody else has any more comments. I'd like to recognize the softball girls, 12U Division and the 10U Division. They ended up winning the division and they're going to go compete in Rawls for sectionals. They did a really good job and I'd like to wish them a little, you know, I wish them some really good luck this weekend to represent Pecos. They have both won the division.
Any other public comments? We will go on to the consent agenda. Item F1, approve the minutes of the June 17th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting, and E2, approve the expenditure report.
the done?
Just wanted to say, Charles, who's Crystal Watts?
She is Watts, she is our GIS staff member and those, that's an educational reimbursement program.
She's working on her master's.
Her master's in planning.
Yeah.
Which is really good.
I think it's down the number. Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Carrasco to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. We'll go to item F1, update on resources available to the Town of Pecos City by the Office of Congressman Tony Gonzalez, Texas District 23, Strategic Goal 5, promote open and consistent communication. Roberto Garza, Jr., Regional District Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Roberto Garza, Regional Director, Congressman Tony Gonzalez. This evening, I just want to shed light on a vital yet often overlooked function of our congressional office, and that's casework. When we think of Congress, we usually picture big picture debates on the House floor or big pieces of legislation, but for most Americans, their closest interaction with the federal government is actually comes through casework. Casework refers to the direct assistance that our congressional office provides to constituents who are having trouble with the federal agency. So if you have a constituent who has an issue with social security benefits, a delayed passport, stalled immigration application, or trouble with the VA, just a few examples, that's where casework comes in. Congressional offices act as advocates, making inquiries, and ensuring that their voice is heard. While we can't force an agency's decision, we can ensure that their rights are upheld and that they submit their proper paperwork and that their case is handled in a timely manner. So the next time you have a constituent that says, hey, I'm having a problem with said federal agency, please refer them our way. And they can do that several ways. They can go to gonzalez.house.gov under help of the federal agency, and they can, they can, we, we, once they put her in there, we'll get the case, I mean, I will get it right, right to my system. And then they can also do it by calling these two numbers, which I'll share with you, the San Antonio office at 210-806-9920, and my office in El Paso, 915-990-1500. We're here to help. This is a free service, and I just really want to make sure that the constituents know that we're here to help with these agencies, because we know that, you know, a lot of times, some of these cases can draw out, and, and by us getting involved, we can speed up the case sometimes, you know, depending on, on the circumstances. But just wanted to share that information with you guys, so you have it in your toolbox as well, to share with your constituents. So pending your questions, that's all I have.
Last year, I had a client that, he's been, he's been over here, he's got his own business, and he's been here about three years.
Yes, sir.
And he has his driver's license in Spas.
Yes, sir.
He, he wouldn't, he wouldn't leave it.
Yes, sir.
He couldn't get his driver's license.
Yes, sir.
And so I called y'all's office, and he, he spent a lot of money with an attorney, didn't help him. And so I called y'all's office, and y'all gave him some contacts, and in two weeks, he had, he got it everywhere.
Yes, sir. And, and that's one thing we can do, if we can't, you know, connect with the federal agency, we can connect you with the state or, or, you know, agency that can help you out. So thank you so much for hearing me. Pending your questions, that's all I have.
Can you verify, let me double check the number here real quick. You said your number in El Paso is 915-990-1500?
Yes, sir.
Is there an extension?
No, sir. It's online.
So we do have a couple of gentlemen that are military associates of ours that have questions about getting a VA certified business, is that something you can help them with?
Sure, we can point them in the right direction, yes, sir. Just happen to call, I'm also the veteran caseworker as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming by.
Yes, sir.
And item F2, update on programs and events at Cyclone Ballpark. Strategic Goal 5, promote open and consistent communication. Thomas Ward, Director.
Thomas is ill today. Mayor and Council, Charles Lino, City Manager, I'm going to read you his update that he did to me. I'll answer what questions I can, can't guarantee you I can do them all, though. His update's today, he apologizes for not being here. He says, "All-Stars went smoothly, only with minor disagreements that Pecos PD were able to handle." Thank you, Chief, for the assistance, and we had $12,000 in food and beverage sales during All-Stars. Summer leagues are set to start next week for adult softball and kickball. Under the lights, Flag Football has signed an agreement to start a Pecos League for elementary aged youth. This first season will be this fall after school is started, and information will be shared as details are finalized with UTL. Our next rights holders tournament is July 5th and 6th with Perfect Game Softball, and we have two others scheduled for July. Warner &amp; Forbes, a local band out of Odessa, will be returning to Cyclone on July 25th for the next Beats at the Ballpark. More details will be shared via social media. Cyclone Ballpark's World Series will take place the weekend of July 18th and 20th. We will host an in-house tournament for T-ball through 12U in baseball and softball for teams from across West Texas and New Mexico. Registration is live on our website, and more details will be released in the, in the upcoming weeks. My last update today was to formally invite Council, Madam Mayor, and City staff to the grand opening of Phase Two amenities at Cyclone Ballpark on July 17th. This event will begin with a VIP preview cocktail hour from 5:30, at 5:30, then at 6:30, the public is invited for the official ribbon cutting and activities including games, giveaways, splash pad fun, bounce houses, and more. The fun will continue through the weekend with the Pecos Bills game on Friday, and on Saturday, we will keep the party going with more fun, including special guests that will be announced via social media and other activities. We encourage everyone to keep an eye on our social media pages for the updates and announcements of all of the grand opening events. Official invites will be sent to the VIPs early next week. Again, if there's any questions, reach out to him, and he will be more than happy to help you. The other items that I gave you is, the monthly report is in there, and I also gave you all a copy of something that he started doing the last few weeks, and that's giving me a weekly update on what's happened over the last week. So that's something that we can share more often if, if council would like to see it.
I have a couple of questions on this food and beverage. Wanted to see down the road, you can probably look at item comparing prices, been hearing lots of feedback on prices in July. Want to double check that.
Yes, sir.
Another thing, this is from personal experience itself, we took wings into consideration many years ago, and these are pre-cooked wings, stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
They were, they would bring in a revenue of $130,000 a year. So I know that's something that we probably don't see at Cyclone, little things like that that kind of bring in some numbers up. I did get a call today about these tournaments taking place. Are we going to be, a couple of questions there, will we be advertising on the radio? And also, do we have any relationships with any, geez, I lost my, Chamber of Commerce in other small towns like Monahans and Warp Stock?
We do.
We can promote these things?
Yes, sir.
Because there's a lot of sports people out there that, who are not aware?
Yeah.
Or how they can get on our social media, so we can kind of get them down there as well?
Yeah, I'd probably have to obligate, if we're going to reach out to other chambers of commerce, to talk to them, but Cindy and Sarah have those contacts in other areas, especially Sarah, so we can definitely look at that. And yes, sir, I think promotion is the big deal. I think Thomas did tell me that they are promoting on the radio as well as in the newspaper right now.
One of the things that I, especially for like the Pecos Bills, that I don't know, because I haven't heard anything on the radio, I haven't seen, I don't read the paper much, but when I do see it, I never see anything that has, has to do with the Pecos Bills. And I know it's not our job, but it is our community, and it is our Cyclones, so I'd like to see them push it even more. I mean, they, they wanted to come over here and, and, the last time I went by the ballpark, there are just not, not a lot of people there.
Absolutely, and we can have those conversations with the Pecos League on, on that, they're responsible for their advertising that way.
Right.
I do know that Cyclone puts it on the website and lets people know about upcoming games, but it is not, that is a, a side piece of it, because they're not the main, don't have the main responsibility for that advertising. So it's something we can discuss with the Pecos League.
And I think what's going to help is when we get that, that signage that we're gonna, that we, we have.
It definitely will, yes, sir.
It'll help out.
Chief, wanted to thank your staff as well for, I saw them controlling a lot, had a good presence out there, so they were much appreciated for helping out during the All-Star tournament. They were very active and very momental.
Yes, sir.
Had a good presence.
Good.
And we've encouraged that in the past, it was kind of put to the wayside for several years, because our concern was there was something that was going to happen, so.
That'd be good to have, because I've been out there plenty of times, and, you know, just to, you know, just the presence of a police officer makes a lot of, a lot of difference. And, and you know, you're going to have to have a presence here pretty quick, because we got this, what do you say, this, adult softball and kickball, and you're going to have attitudes with Mr. Graham, the superstar Charles over there, and so.
I'm a superstar.
For one team.
I already got it.
But you see how it's already started? But no, in, in theory, I, I like to see, I like to see them, because at least one, you know, just to make a walk through there and, or drive through however they got it set up.
Yeah, we had them on one of their UTVs. Yes, sir.
But I'm glad to see what they did with the All-Stars, the 12,000 improved, that were pretty, pretty decent. I haven't seen all the, I'll read that later, but that's a lot of reason.
Yeah, there's some room, room for improvement, but they are, they, over the last few months, they have made some progress.
And that, that deal, that's a concert, right?
Yes, sir.
Warner &amp; Forbes.
Warner &amp; Forbes, that's a complete thing.
They're pretty good. We actually hosted them at Changel's, so they're really good. It's a classic one.
I think last year, they were there last year, right?
Yes, sir.
And that needs to be advertised, break down the radio and all that, because I heard them, the community's were pretty, pretty, pretty good.
Anything else, Mayor? Council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F3, presentation by AirMed Care Network, for full membership for medical flights for city employees. Goal six, sound governments and physical management. Xavier Becerra, AirMed Care Network Membership Sales Manager.
Good evening, and thank you, thank you for having me this evening. I was speaking to Mr. Lino last week regarding our partial membership that we have for Reeves County residents. A lot of people aren't aware that the expense of a medical flight to anywhere is quite substantial. I brought it to his attention that there are other benefits for full membership available, and I'd like to make them available to all city employees. I've also got, in talks with, with Reeves County as well. I want to take care of our people at home first, you know, but if you have any questions regarding...
Do we have a brochure, conceived what?
That can be emailed to you, yes, sir. Immediately, yes, sir. I wanted to just, number one, introduce myself, what my role consists of, and to let you know that I'm, I'm here to serve the community. Arrow Care is here for, for one specific purpose, and that's to take care of us.
Or helicopters here.
Or helicopters here, yes, sir. I'm over 14 counties, so I'm kind of mobile.
Or do you?
Yes, sir.
Off southern.
I live in Pecos, yes, sir. But I look forward to sitting down with Mr. Lino again and discussing full membership for the city employees. And at that point in time, I'm sure he'll have plenty of questions listed for me to answer, or I can come back here and we'll do this again.
We have a program right now, though. We do, there's one with the county that, through the ESD that they have, the city right now offers a Massalum. We've had those discussions, and it's something that it could be an option. It looks like the pricing of this may be just as favorable, if not a little more favorable than the Massalums. It would cover cost, but the thing that we would have to do is, if you are being transported from the hospital, I think we have to specifically ask for a certain carrier, because if not, there's a potential that some of it's not carried through the, through the county. So if you get picked up, and, and for right now, I think some of it, you may get that flight thinking it's going to be free, and it may not be free. So this is something that he and I had a discussion about, and it just gives us another option where we can look at it, because I think, especially for our, our staff and their families here in town, that we need to make sure that we minimize our costs as much as possible. Personally, no benefit of it, but they've got to have insurance at the time, and then the life policy, that's, that's the new rule. Yeah, so it is expensive, like you mentioned. You know, I have insurance, it's a lot of other, of course, it's popular. Yeah, so it may be something that you can complement, the way that we have Massalum complementing the one with the county right now. This would be something where we can make a look at it, announce a time, or whether or not we could do it. They're going to be more local than Massalum, Massalum's a national company, so if we're looking to do something like that, we're going to have a, a local part in consideration instead of just where we get Massalum from, starting down in the budget coming in.
So this would be something we buy into, and we have, we, as a city employee, a benefit from it, through charge?
Yes, or... It depends on what the package is. Councilman Carrasco, Mayor and Council's been really good about subsidizing a significant portion of health insurance. Some of these annual loss that is deducted from the employee, but it can be passed on as a benefit, a solid benefit that we can have that way.
How far do your flex go? Let's say we wanted to choose someone like Lovett, you guys go to Lovett?
We're the largest medical transportation in the world. Yeah, we have over 320 bases, over 500 assets in the air. Yes, sir.
So if I, like if someone in the city says, you know, I don't want to go to Millin, I want to go to Lovett, that's something that they would cover.
Protocol on the healthcare physician makes that decision. Like it's not up to the flight crews and, yeah, it's, it's regarding what level of care they need. That's the, how they decide on where they're going.
And they are also, I see a doctor at the other end that's willing to take that patient at that time.
Correct. My mother was going to be flight out of Pecos, back in El Paso was the one that needed to be flight, we wanted Lovett, but they said, no, that's the one that she was supposed to adopt, determine, both, both ends determine.
Yes, sir.
That's good stuff.
Yes, sir.
You want to figure out a trajectory with the cover?
I actually was part of a landing zone establishment a couple of weeks ago in South Texas. So for large properties like down in the Big Bend, we've actually got another landing zone that's going to be prepared and established for the residents down there who live on very large properties. So it's not only, go ahead.
Oh, what if that movement is in Canada?
We operate in Canada as well, and we have international flights, yes, sir.
It would be effective there.
We have our international flights as well, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
Look forward to the brochure and seeing the numbers.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, I'll provide that. Thank y'all for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item F4, discuss, consider approving a public broadway application for an encroachment garage set onto city roadway and on property legally described as Block 5, Block 8, college addition to the Town of Pecos City. Strategic Goal 7, enhance Pecos' infrastructure network. I understand this needs to be tabled?
It needs to be removed, it's, I think it was settled.
Okay.
Outside private.
So they've set it outside?
Yes, ma'am.
So do we need a motion for that?
To, yeah, just to... To, yeah, just to.
No action?
No action.
No action.
Okay. We'll go on to item F5. Discuss consider entering into a production sharing agreement at PSA with Civitas Permian Operating LLC as submitted by Bison Energy Group LLC for drilling wells on or under section 15 to 16 watt power. H and G, H and G and Railroad Company Survey, Reeves County. This is strategic goal six, sound governments and physical management department, City of Pecos, City of Pecos.
So the agenda lists me, but we've got Jody Watkins here, who's a representative for Seduce. And I'll let him explain it to you because he can do it a lot better than I can. And then if you have any questions, I expect he can answer. Mr. Watkins did do with Charles and I a little while back and explained everything. It's very similar to pooling, a little different, but I'll defer to Mr. Watkins to answer any questions you may have.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Councilman. My name is Jody Watkins, as Parker said, with Civitas Permian Operating LLC. Give her base company currently drilling south of the airport, the rig that's out there off, right off of 17. That's our wells that are drilled there. It's called the Nice Marmot. Rather unique situation has happened over the course of years. There's been tens of thousands of allocation wells drilled. Now an allocation well is simply the length of lateral crossing a specific track. That amount of production is allocated into the total length of lateral. All right. What happened specifically in Reeves County, there was so much pooling going on early on in wells lives, and that was generally the standard, kind of the golden standard of how everybody would set up a well, set up their units. And so with pooling, you have, you know, a five acre track into a 300 acre unit, and through division and everything, you get your royalty interest. Now currently, there are four existing units as shown on the plats that I provided you guys. On the western side and north is up on the plat. So on the western side, you'll see that we have the Balmari State Unit, kind of on the bottom or the south of the plat, and the City of Pecos 1516. So now, since these are two pooled units, we now have to allocate production between the pooled units in order to calculate the amount of royalties that would be paid to the City of Pecos. So just doing some rough numbers here, for that unit, and there's five wells total, three in this, three on this side, and then there'll be three on, two on the east. So roughly 24% of the lateral is represented in the Balmari State Unit. And so you can see that pretty easily. A smaller portion of lateral here, larger portion of lateral here. City of Pecos is currently receiving royalties on all of the wells across all four units. This is just gonna be an allocation method to determine what proportion of the royalties that you get based on each length of lateral as it bears to the total. All right, we following so far? So currently, in what I'll call the northern, the City of Pecos has a 12.2% net revenue interest. And so that's gonna be the royalty interest that they're getting out of that pooled unit. And so 75% of the lateral has a 12% royalty, and then 24% of the lateral has a 7% royalty. So when you break the math all the way down, you get 75 times 12, 24 times 7, and you come up with somewhere around 11%. On the east side, same exact scenario, same exact calculations. Length of laterals are a little bit different on this side because of the placement of the two units, the Balmari State A Unit and the City of Pecos State 1516 Unit. And that instance, the Town of Pecos is currently getting 18.75% net revenue interest attributable to the City of Pecos State 1516 Unit and a 6% interest roughly in the Balmari State Unit. Doing the same math, same allocation method and methodology, that comes up with a total of 14.43% net revenue interest shared between the two units based on the allocation method as explained. Bison Energy on behalf of Civitas, one of our contractors, submitted the PSA for the city to execute. And I know, I think it was tabled at least once or twice, so I wanted to come out and give it before you guys, ask if you had any questions, and see if there's anything that I could explain further to, to better enunciate what we're doing and, you know, to explain it to you guys.
Do we have oil and gas determining on our team?
No, sir.
Is that something we might want to think about down the road? We can understand and source that so we can make sure we're getting, you know, someone to understand this more in detail legally. That would help us, you know, win for us as well. I mean, I'm looking at some of this and I'm gonna be honest, it's not my department. And, you know, in Millland, they got an old gas officer named Garrett Clayton that kind of helps explain some of this more in detail.
Yes, sir. That's something maybe, I don't know if we would consider working out down the road that would help us.
Did Balmari go work in?
Balmari is waiting on the city, I'm sorry, the General Land Office of the State of Texas to execute their PSA. We're currently on the docket for July 15th, I believe.
To execute their what?
To execute their version of a production sharing agreement.
Okay.
So one thing that the state requires, if they have any, any ownership at all in any, any allocation wells or units, you have to submit an application to the GLO and let the commissioner, they'll have the same school land board meeting, similar to what we're doing here tonight, and then they will approve it.
Just raise our production or lower it or give me an idea?
Five new wells will definitely raise your production probably considerably. The royalty spread across those wells is gonna be the equivalent of, if you drilled 50% of the well onto track X track and 50% on the other, it's just gonna share in those proportions as they bear to the total length of the lateral.
On existing production, what does that do for us?
Existing production is not affected at all. We're drilling in different zones than...
So this is just for the five wells?
This is for the five new additional wells. Now previously, I don't know if y'all ever entered into a production sharing agreement with Noble, but Noble has already drilled a couple of allocation wells across you guys here, or across lands that included the Town of Pecos. But to key takeaway, five new wells coming online will be, can be pretty significant Any other questions I could hopefully answer?
So you said the Balmari State, how many wells are on that?
The Balmari State, the A Unit or the B Unit?
Either one. Or both? What's the total between both of them?
Between both of them, there's gonna be five wells.
Five wells, okay. Three and two or two?
Right, right. Two on the east side, three on the west side. And that spacing is largely due to existing production, existing wells that are there. They create something, without getting way into it, that they call parent-child relationship. The wells start communicating with each other. And so we keep them spaced as optimally as possible to not affect the existing production, and so we don't have degradation in the new wells from new production.
Okay. What records that really is located on 17?
So right behind the, right south of the city dump.
There's a well being drilled there right now.
Those, that's the wells. There's, there's five of them. Currently, they're drilling on the western side, so they're drilling, they'll drill three wells, and then I think it's July 30th roughly when we make it over to the east side and drill those two wells. They'll complete in short order, and provided we have the full infrastructure there and full takeaway capacity, they'll be coming online sometime in August. And then Town of Pecos could expect division orders to come out within 60 days following that, and revenue to be coming within, you know, as soon as you guys get the, the vision order back to us, it'll be within 30 to 60 days.
Hold second.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, second from Councilman Carrasco to enter into a production sharing agreement with Civitas Permian Operating as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman?
Thank you. Go on to item F6. Discuss consider approving a utility easement agreement with Alfred and Christina Garcia for lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, block 1. Garcia subdivision being the re-plat of a 2.06 acre tract land on the north party, of the north party of track 16, Fort Doc Daggett acres, which is unreported, out of section 10, block 5, abstract number 241, block 5. H and G and Railroad Company Survey in the Town of Pecos City, Reeves County, Texas, and as more particularly described in the attached exhibit A, goal seven, enhance Pecos infrastructure network. Parker Johnson, city attorney. And I didn't see an exhibit.
Just the agreement.
So it was on the one I got from, sorry, on the last council packet, but nonetheless, the Garcia's acquired this tract. It's a property near the intersection of Plum and Lincoln. It used to be Mr. Riley Harrison's, I think. And they've got a survey to subdivide that. The city wanted an alleyway included, so they went back and got that included. There's 25 foot avenue dedicated in the survey. Survey also references an existing sewer line, so they asked me to prepare an easement. So this form of easement is simply them as the landowner giving the city utility easement for that, as depicted in the plaque.
Is it the property, lots by the personal?
In that vicinity, yes.
And you will be seeing the actual plat later on, once it does get approved by the planning and zoning board. It is more than four lots. So you will be seeing that plat to be approved by and law as well?
But I do have the plat if anyone wants to see it.
And this is located back down here by the?
These are on Plum and like just off Lincoln.
On the west side of Plum, south.
Okay, or there's building all the, you won't see mine.
No.
Apartments or no?
Nothing. Well, that's to the north.
Oh, that's, okay, okay.
It's gonna be to the right.
These are actually just north of the nursing.
It'll be the old, it'll be the old Little East Field.
Yeah, okay. I know where it's at.
Many years ago, something like that.
So basically, this item, they be the ones granting the easement, we're just accepting it for existing plants.
Mayor, make a motion to approve F6, discuss consider approving a utility easement with Alfred and Christina Garcia.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Councilman Arona, second from Councilman Carrasco, to approve the utility agreement with Alfred and Christina Garcia as presented. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F7, discuss consider ordinance 25-06-01, an ordinance from Indian Chapter 22, environment of the city code of the law, and ordinances designed to regulate noise by various alternative means. Strategic goal two, safeguard city. Lisa Toronto, Chief of Police.
Mayor, Council, Lisa Thaddeus, Chief of Police. Before you in your packet, you will see an ordinance 250601. We continue to have some noise complaints specifically in certain areas of the community where there's a club or a bar, and it doesn't outreach the decibel meters that's required by law as far as it does not go over that, but it's still causing a hindrance to the residents in the area. And so with Cyrus' assistance, we were able to research some different ordinances and communities around Pecos just to kind of get maybe a better idea of what we could do better. Talking with the owner of the club, he did put in some sound barriers to try to eliminate some of the noise, but it's, it's not helping. So we're looking for, maybe redo the ordinance or at least modify it to where we have a little bit more to work with. I know it's still, the state law says one thing, but the city ordinance is able to set its own standards in place.
So what is it set at now?
It's set, the state law is it, if it does not exceed 85.
85?
Yes, that's state law.
But local ordinance can, can make the adjustments for it?
City Council can set an ordinance that can make an adjustment for that.
85 or above makes it a disorder in conduct.
Correct.
And the city can regulate it more as a, have to pay for your nuisance issue.
Yeah, for different times of the...
Different times, different dates, as far as days of the week.
Well, I think that, that's, because I also have a friend that lives right next to a bar and same thing, they, they struggle with that. And the same thing, you know, they, they go and talk to them and they lower it, but you know, it's, it's, something has to be, because when the police officers show up, they, they, their decibel meter and they, they're within the range.
And it's very difficult when you have residents that are near these clubs or these facilities that have, you know, after hours, late hour operations. It makes it very difficult. And in this area especially, you know, we're talking about doing the cultural district and there's lots of after, you know, nightlife down here, so that's gonna continue to be something that we're gonna deal with.
And I think, I believe, I think it's time that we, we start changing the ordinance if we can, just, just to prepare ourselves for what, what we're preparing to do with downtown and the areas around. Because we can move the residents, and if we want downtown to be thriving, we have to offer what, what the people want, you know, the nightlife, coming in and out of places like that. But if we can, we set up an ordinance that can at a certain time lower it from 85 to let's say 75, and then after midnight, another 10, 10 decimals, that, that would help. Because I don't think nothing stays open past 2:00 in the morning, probably.
As far as we know, they do not. And if they are, it's not legal, so.
Okay.
Yes. But what we would ask the council to consider, looking at language, to maybe have the, the businesses put in a decibel meter, even one that can be seen from the outside and the inside, kind of like you would see at a football game. And that a way, the officers can observe it, the residents can observe it and say, yeah, it's, it's above, we need to call it in, you know, because...
Like trailways starts around about 8:00, they start their deaths.
And that's probably about the time things really kick off.
Yeah, and they go to about 2:00, which is four hours. I don't know, maybe, you could start at 7 and end it at 1, but you start lowering your decibels around 9:00.
The ordinance is saying 10.
Yes, if, if we look at, at some of the, the language that, and you know, Cyrus was able to get some from like Fort Stockton and different, because Fort Stockton's very similar. They have some bars or clubs that are in residential areas. And so obviously, they're kind of dealing with some of the same stuff. And, you know, it's, it's kind of difficult because the homes are, they're grandfathered in, just like some of these businesses are grandfathered in. So even some of this, because the business is grandfathered in, some of those changes may be difficult.
What's the number again, Chief?
Anything that exceeds 85 is illegal.
So one thing, you, you brought a really great idea. You actually took the idea is to put something outside?
Mm-hmm.
But we also have to look at it from a different perspective. If we're gonna be pushing this entertainment district moving forward?
Yes, sir.
That we're not gonna be coming back and forth and manipulating the decibel levels of this. So with that being said and done, I mean, I like the idea of putting something outside, but to come up with a magic number, I mean, that, that's a tough one right now.
That is a tough one, and depending, like you say, nights of the week, but it may be the night of the week where, you know, the resident needs to sleep because they have to be up at 5:00 in the morning to go to work, or whatever the case may be. And then the, the reading has to come from the complainant's property line or address. It's not like a reading that would come outside the bar. So if it was, say, a block from trailways, we actually have to go to that residence on the property line to run the decibel meter there. And so we have decibel meter at the PD. We'd probably invest in some more of those, but I've, I've kind of weighed it back and forth about the language of the businesses putting it into their facilities as well. but I've kind of weighed it back and forth about the language of the businesses putting it into their facilities as well, where they can kind of police themselves on the decibel meter. But like a football game, is it going to make them like, hey, let's see how loud we can get this, and it just goes higher? You know, you just, I don't know what's going to be the best option for the businesses as well on this, or the entertainment district, you know? If that's what we're going to continue to promote over here, there's residents all around this little area back here.
Why not just maintain them over, so the decibels should be dealing with it, keep it, keep it balanced? Instead of having the up and down throughout the day? I'm older now, so when it would have played, it has loud music, I like to have conversation.
Sure.
You could be able to go. When I was younger, I wanted the music to be loud.
You wanted it loud, right?
Now that's why I have to listen to music a little low, because I'm dead.
Sure, sure.
To make parties. But we might as well sit up, you know, throwing balls up in here every time to see where we're going to hit this thing, set it at seventy-five decimals.
Or an unacceptable one that could be agreeable to the patrons as well as the residents. And what that would be, you know, I think it, again, it depends on the crowd, I guess you can say.
If we're going to set the limit, then it should be a yes regardless of, of the business.
And like you said, if you set a certain decibel, you don't have to worry about, well, are they in this zone? Are they in this zone? Is it after ten, or is it before ten, or is it weekend, or is it the weeknight? And so there's too many variables in there that can play.
Absolutely is. You know, is it a holiday, is it the Fourth of July, for instance, or whatever, it's...
Both same throughout.
Yes, sir.
So the day, the holiday, or the weekday, whatever.
So what we do on two others, we're going to have to do to everybody else.
Yes, sir.
So my thing, my question is, maybe we're, we might be looking this for one type of business, but take me into the future here really quick. Pretend we set the seventy-five, and then we get a complaint, and then another complaint. What is it get to the point where they lose the ability to operate as a business to where not complying? Can you kind of explain that more in detail?
I think that would fall into the language that council puts into this ordinance. You know, here's your permit, here's the guidelines, however many, like you say, two or three violations in, is there going to be higher penalties, is there going to be pulling of the permit where they can no longer operate? You know, that's something that the council would, with probably Parker's help, be able to come up with some language of what that would look like.
I think for this type of ordinance, really the threshold question is going to be reasonableness. It has to be unreasonable for us to tell them to stop, basically. Now, I don't know what number of decibels reasonable is. You see what other cities do, we see eighty-fives obviously at the high end, but reasonableness comes down to, you know, case-by-case basis, I suppose.
It's like, I grew up a block and a half from the railroad tracks. Where I'm probably getting them, you know? I still hear it, and I'm about, what, two miles from the track, maybe, still hear it. It's funny, it doesn't bother me as much, but it still wakes me up. So, but if we control it and find that happy medium to make everybody happy, we're not going to make everybody happy, because it was stated in my...
But if we get it down from eighty-five to, let's say, seventy-five, and as an ordinance to start, and let's see how that works? Without having the escalating every hour, or every few hours, because they're going to shogay it.
And with the calls that we've taken, nobody's gone over the state allowed decibel reading. It's been below that, but it's, I'm with you, to wear that happy medium, you're not going to please everybody, but if there's kind of some way we can look at, see what, and, you know, put in the language as far as equipment that maybe the council would like to see them, like the decibel meter, where it can be read maybe from inside and outside. I've looked at different ones, like they use in football stadiums or places like that. Again, like I said, I don't know if that's going to encourage get louder and let's see how loud we can get the decibels, or if that will get people's attention to see. And a lot of times, it's just the bass. And I'm with Mr. Arona, at one time in my age, I probably wanted louder bass, and I don't want that anymore, but for a younger crowd, they may want higher bass.
The thing that gets me, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Is an average vacuum is seventy-five decibels. And if we do this, I think we need to look more into what the repercussions would be if they don't, you know, comply.
Agreed.
And then we start really ruffling some feathers, and of course, going back to the direction we want to move forward in the future, creating a district. I mean, of course, that's something we can always amend, but it's just got to be an overall, is it one citizen compared to a lot of citizens?
Yes, sir.
That we're jumping on to make this change? Or, you know, that's what I'm trying to see, the bigger picture.
Understood.
Because we have apartments across the street that are in front of the spot, and that's the same concept, you know?
Yes, sir.
They play live music, too. So it's just something right now, I probably am going to abstain until I get more information.
And is it one citizen that's willing to be the spokesperson? Or is it others have found, you know, they'll sleep with earplugs, or they'll sleep with, you know, other methods to control how they sleep or the noise level, but...
Well, we could have a town hall meeting with the owners of the spot, trailways, and ask... I mean, I'm pretty sure from eighty-five, which is normally not eighty-five, is it?
No.
So I don't think seventy-five is going to be, where you can say, hey, turn the music up, I can't hear the music, through conversations, you know? I understand what Councilman Carrasco is saying, you know? We can always come back and amend it.
You don't want it constantly being in the beginning of ordinances?
Or having to say, the stage, the stagger, you know, just...
Just set one level.
Keep it that way?
And I can agree not to ping pong this back and forth, depending in the future what's going to happen. If we can put a set standard, get that in motion, and just leave it, I think would be the best, the best approach.
And Chief, maybe you can answer, when there has been calls where it's been problematic, but not above the eighty-five level, what kind of levels are the officers seeing when they measure?
So I haven't had them send me what those readings are. All they tell me is that it's not above the state requirement, so. But we could do that, I can get, you know, readings from them to say, hey, here's what the level, or even like Mr. Carrasco said, maybe I need to bring an example of, hey, here's what eighty-five is, here's what seventy-five is, and kind of give you an example of those noise levels, if that would be helpful.
And that might change the way people redesign their businesses moving forward in the future.
Sure.
Because you could go to John's accident, you won't hear anything. But that's also going to help them redesign when we do move in that right direction to expand our local downtown, that they're going to have to think about that when they develop and design businesses.
So there's some barriers.
Right.
And for businesses coming up, I can see there's some great standards. For their grandfathered ones, I think are the ones that we're going to have to work with on what's already in place.
Well, bringing them to the table and asking for cooperation, it may help, and maybe we need to...
It has been helpful to bring them to the table, because we did do that with trailways, as far as they were at least willing to have the discussion. Did they have to? No. He didn't have to because he wasn't violating the state law nor the ordinance. But now we're to a point where it's, it's still kind of a problem area, as far as the complaints that we get on the noise.
Is it just one business, Chief, or multiple businesses?
There's two different ones. One I haven't heard of in a long time, the one Mr. Saldana is referring to. The main one has been here at trailways. And you guys have probably sat here in council, and you can hear it at times, and so it's...
Well, not more louder than those J breaks that Councilman Carrasco...
Sure. You know, it is, the difference, is it music being played from a machine, or is it a live band? With the live band, you know, it may be a little bit different, it may be louder, it may, the bass be louder and the noise be higher. I don't know, it's kind of a, I can agree with you, it's, for one person, we're going to change a lot of stuff, but I don't think it's just for one person, I just think there's few that are going to speak up.
Well, and then we're also going to look at the future, I mean...
Yes, ma'am.
But other places that are going to be opening, and they need to go ahead and be prepared.
Well, and it sounds like a lot of that is going to be concentrated in this area, so we have to anticipate what that's going to be like. Because like Mr. Carrasco said, there's apartments above these businesses already.
And they're probably dancing to them now.
They may be, or they may be at work and sleep during the day, who knows? So at your discretion or what you guys want to see from me, you know, I'm open to, let me show you what these noise levels sound like, or however you want to do it, if we need to do a town hall meeting and include businesses.
I have to know the difference, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Like get some few readings, like Mr. Carrasco, Congressman Carrasco is alluding to, you know, so to do a comparison.
Sure. Sure.
And that raises this issue, and I can understand that. Even Councilman Trillo says she hears it, she's about, what, three blocks? West, four blocks, west or south, that's where she lives. But we've got to find that happy medium, and of course, like I said, you know, we're not going to please everybody, hopefully we can find that one sweet spot that can satisfy most.
I know Ms. Flores has been willing to speak up, and I know she has spoken to her neighbors who have the same concerns. She's just kind of the one who's willing to speak up about, you know, in the middle of the night, some of the noise.
Now, maybe two o'clock. I remember as a kid, we'd go to dances, they ended, there was John Travolta, you remember? Was that?
Yeah, John.
The two, two, I thought it was one, no, back in the days.
There was two? You are not in a state online to remember.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
That we could have these talks, one last one talk?
Yes, sir.
And say that we mean business?
Yes, sir.
Because anybody, like I said, coming in the future is going to have to design their establishment to our ordinance, to be foolish not to. And then we're also going to have to come up with a way on how we're going to mean business, too. I mean, we can't just be slapping people on the wrist, say, okay, you know, we need you to do this, and then we come back and they say, we did this, but saying, you're on your last straw, I mean, this is it. And once we pass this, there's going to be more repercussions down the road.
Sure. And you know, the part about, as far as it being an ordinance on our end, the most we can do is give them a citation, and then it goes to municipal court, and it's almost like a revolving, it's like animals at large, pay your ticket and you just keep going, you know? It's, there's no like enhancement at times on some of these ordinances. And like what you're saying, I think maybe we could create some sort of enhancement. If here's your first-time violation, and then second and third, there'd be maybe a little harsher penalty or whatever we can do.
If we get a whack of innocence, I mean, that itself, just your certificate of innocence, it could be embedded, and you're playing a war about the ordinance to say, hey, it's gone, or suspended.
The issue we get into there is if we do that for noise violations, we're likely looking at a regulatory taking this case, and they're looking for the value of the business from us since they can no longer operate it. I mean, there's probably a fine line in there somewhere, but if we get too involved in overregulating to where they can no longer operate their business, you know, they can sue us for it.
And also, could they sue us for saying, well, the state level of eighty-five, why are you that low?
State level saying, oh, no, well, I'm not saying they couldn't sue, but a number of other cities have that. I think it's, it's pretty well established that cities can regulate to an extent. I mean, the state is a criminal matter for disorderly conduct. The city's is a health and safety and enjoyment of property issue.
This copy of this ordinance, is this ours or this one?
No, this is one that was put together. Cyra had gotten some ordinances from other communities. Also, not just small ones, but like in Houston, places like that where they have a nightlife, and just kind of, you know, we, together, we kind of geared one to see what it may look like, what it could look like here.
And most of them have the different hours, or?
Yes, sir, they do.
Make a motion, we table this to get a more information.
And I'd like to hear the difference between eighty-five, seventy-five, fifty-five.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Carrasco to tackle this. To get more information, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F8, discuss, consider, resolution 25-06-09R, awarding bid for the water pressure improvements for area one and six, project Deere Wood Construction, Inc., in the amount of $1,987,663.56. Strategic Goal 7, Enhance Pecos' Infrastructure Network, Calvin Richland.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. Calvin Richland, Director of Public Works. Has the mayor read the resolution? Are there any questions about this?
Budget?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir, it is budgeted. Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir. Yes. Yes.
Are the bids included on this attachment?
Yeah, there though, it's the last page.
It's the last one, okay.
What's the difference in the unit bid and extended amount?
I'm sorry, what is it?
What's the difference in the unit bid and extended amount?
I don't have the attachment handy. Chad, do you know what that's speaking about?
It's the number, number of units, I see.
Okay, okay. Okay, no, that's okay, I just didn't have it in front of me.
Have you worked with this folks before?
So the engineering company that we're using, WTC, those guys have?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yes, sir, Councilman. Chad Tonkins, WTC, Deere Wood, they're from Lubbock. We always, we have not worked with them directly, but we do call, check references, and they have a very good reputation. They do quite a lot of work around Lubbock. And when he was here, he just, you know, kind of like, hey, man, you know, what you doing here? And he indicated that it was a little slow in Lubbock. They implemented some, what do they call it? New rules for development. It was called the Unified Development Regulations, I think, or something like that. So basically, pretty, you know, additional requirements that they've, than they've had to do in the past. So he said a lot of the developers and things are trying to figure out how to deal with it and comply, so it was slow. So he was happy to have some work down here, give us a really good bid. Our estimate initially, before the job bid was about, when I gave it to Kelvin initially, I think it was like 2.8 million, so it was a good bid, it was a really good bid. And I think if we would have updated our estimate, you know, kind of prices sometimes tracked down a little bit, it would have probably been a little lower, but I feel like the 1.9 is a good bid, it's a very good bid.
Area one and six, what are the...
So area one is near the high school and the hospital. Yes, that's the first area that we decided to attack first.
And six, is that one and six, is that block?
Six is, there's a little work, it's not, like, when we kind of schemed out this, some of these water improvements, there's more than in six than what we're doing this time, but why are we doing it this time? We have a problematic line in Third Street that goes from 285 to, is it Locust that goes down to the water tower?
Yeah, yeah.
So 285 to Locust, basically, we're abandoning that line underneath the highway. We're figuring out ways to connect lines to other places and do work to get that line abandoned that's under the highway. You know, they just fixed the highway, and it's been, that is a really old line, it's been problematic over time. They've had a lot of leaks, and Michael and those guys, you know, will say they want rid of that line. And so that's what the part in six is for, that purpose.
And also remember that this is in conjunction with the fire hydrants that we spoke about, and making sure that they all receive the right amount of gallons per minute as well. So this is all in conjunction with that.
Well, if there's no other question, I'd like to, that we approve resolution 25-06-09R, presented by Calvin Richland.
I have a motion from Councilman Saldana, a second from Councilman Graham to approve resolution 25-06-09R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Go to item F9, discuss, consider, resolution 25-06-NR, a resolution approving change order number one related to the contract with WTC, Inc., for the Meadowbrook Sewer Line and Homewood Lift Station replacement project in the amount of $587,463. Strategic Goal 7, Enhance Pecos' Infrastructure Network, Calvin Richland.
Again, Mayor, Council, Calvin Richland, Director of Public Works. So again, are there any questions about this change order? And this is related... And this is related to the sewer projects that you all approved some time ago. This is the?
And I understand the change is only one hundred and seventy-eight.
That's right, I was going to make that correction. That's not a windy or sour mistake, that's simply an oversight on my behalf, but you guys should see one seventy-eight, nine hundred. That's what you should see for the change order amount.
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead of five hundred and eighty-five thousand?
Yeah, that's the total amount.
It brings the total up to five hundred and ninety-nine thousand?
Yes, sir. I knew you'd catch that, Mr. Graham. I knew you'd catch that.
And is this going down, how do you get in here?
Behind the, the city yard?
Yes.
And behind for the new housing?
Yes.
But?
Madam? Ma'am, I'd like to motion approve resolution twenty-five dash oh-six dash, dash ten power, presented by Councilman Richland.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Saldana, to approve resolution twenty-five dash oh-six dash ten R, as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F ten, discuss, consider ordinance twenty-five dash oh-six dash oh-two, an ordinance prohibiting the use of engine brakes, jack brakes, second reading, strategic goal two, safe and secure city, Hector Carrasco.
As we discussed last meeting, the role of jack brakes in this community, we talked about noise pollution, you know, especially with the new development on two eighty-five, and it's something that majority of the smaller cities already have, and that's just something that was mentioned by hotel owners, guests, people that own two eighty-five, same nature. But I really, at the moment, I did talk to more business owners, they're pretty excited about it. Like I said, it's a very, it's a public nuisance, and it's something, as long as we educate the public, as mentioned, Charles, and we let them know, especially through text on the website, so they don't know, we might maybe play a little bit of leniency in the beginning, let them know, because they're not used to it, moving forward, we start really putting our foot down, and letting them know that it's a now, something we mean business.
But we would also have signage?
Yes, sir.
We just have an example of what we're, of what we're doing.
That's right. Yeah. And it's his truck.
So, the jack brakes are they over the eight-five?
Wait, I'm sure. Especially if you're right next to them.
Well, and as businesses come in, they're out or dining or whatever, it is a nuisance whenever, you can't sit and talk to people at the table because trucks.
What is it, fourteen thousand trucks a day coming through? Is that the?
Fourteen to fifteen, yes, sir. It's a lot of trucks. I don't know. Make a motion, we approve this.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilman Carrasco, to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty-five dash oh-six dash oh-two, as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Go to item F eleven, update on trash can management plan. Strategic goal five, promote opening consistent communication, Mr. Graham.
All I know, I'm trying to chase the trash can. If you get something a little bit better than that, you know, real small units, what is the county, they're going to have pipers, is that the metal ones, the small metal ones?
Yeah, three yard metal containers. Or you want one?
You want?
You want one?
I don't want to be first in line, but I would like to have one eventually.
He wants my second.
Because my, my.
The Randy can.
So, Commissioner Moore, who wanted to sell it to her precinct, her budget, buy these counts to replace the black plastic containers, which she just promised, maybe this can fit to her precinct, change the amount, is that throughout the city? Because Mr. Graham would be.
I'm not in her business.
That's what I would be, not yet.
No, it is, it is, I think they're intended for her precinct.
Yeah.
Honestly, that's what I think she said, she used to have her discretion and dollars from that standpoint. It is something that we're looking at, trying to make sure that we have the right mix. We have trucks right now to pick up the plastic containers, as well as pick up the metal containers. Some of the impetus to get those plastic containers here in the first place was on false pretenses, so we have access to the metal containers. I don't mind, I honestly, from a functionality standpoint, do not like metal side loading containers, because we cause a lot of damage with them.
They're loud, too.
Yeah, and they are. But right now, we have to do a better job, and there's a plan that Kelvin's working on right now, I'm looking at getting some of the alleys with him and Holly, and talking about it, about chip sealing some alleys and stuff like that. If we do that, it makes, from a dirt management standpoint, much better. From a property damage, we have to, I mean, there's just incidents, especially when we have winds, that the chances of us catching a wire in an alley are very high. We do not hit a lot of gas containers, we have hit some, we shouldn't be hitting gas containers. So, there's some things that we have to really explore. I know some of the newer developments and stuff are talking about wanting to use ninety-six gallon poly carbs for, for to face the rate of the end of the year. Our current trucks will accommodate that, so it's not going to be an issue from that standpoint. I do want to probably explore and see what we have to do over there where Mr. Graham is at, and one of his neighbors says, yeah, he never has a problem, but Mr. Graham is chasing containers all the time.
I had one of my neighbors down the alley, he comes, hey, somebody stole my trash can. I said, no, I saw it going across Texas street.
(laughing). Randy, is he, are you the, is your trash can the only one that?
No, this is other neighbor, his, his trash can. Maybe that trash can found like you.
We do, we do have issues over here on the north side, too. Especially with our.
When Seth and Howdy sold us on that idea, which it wasn't very well received, really, by some of us, did they not research the stability of these things? I mean, where did they go, where did they get them from, where did they get the information from, where they're going to win?
Well, I mean, I, I wish I could answer that question. I do know that there was a comment made that the side loading trucks would become obsolete, and that was one of the reasons for possibly migrating everything to the black containers. That is not the truth.
And I understand what they said at the time, that people are throwing engine blocks, brakes, cement into the metal container, but I don't think it'll stop them from dumping them into plastic containers.
Well, they continued to do that, so it is difficult sometimes, and if they go, you have a contractor going, put a lot of cement, you put a lot of cement in it, our trucks aren't.
And I made the statement back then, that people are reporting or stopping what they're doing illegally dumping stuff in the tanks, and they're going to make the rates, raise up to, with a breaking truck, we need more containers, you know, having to replace equipment that could be self, you know, failures.
Well, and we run into it because some of the contractors don't want to add roll up containers or onsite. They find a way to certainly bend the rules that way, and what they're doing is illegal, but trying to police it is very difficult, because we have hundreds of miles of alleys here, and that's a bit difficult. So, we can continue trying to get better, and that's all we can do is through, I think, is just keep on searching. We did not send anybody to the solid waste association show this year, we will probably do that again, there's a lot of good ideas that you can get from there. I mean, I'm not going to not say that I wouldn't want to go, because it's a nice four-day exposition, or three-day exposition, and it's one hundred percent of the time in Las Vegas, so it's a nice, so.
You're right, but, you know, like going to Vegas, you find innovative ways, not only on trash cans, but kind of what we talked to Kelvin the last time was the weight scale, the technology, so I think it'd be a good idea to even take the council member.
I don't disagree with Councilman Carrasco.
Who are going to be making these decisions, because we've got to see the bigger picture, not only trash cans, but the future of also where we're going for our landfill in a couple of years, and other things as well, so that's, that's what I do with my company, we go to Vegas to the security conference, and it's helped us grow a lot by the modern technology that we can offer our clients, and this is the same thing we can offer to our citizens. So, I mean, I know we're discussing ideas back and forth about chip sealing, but, and I know it's not for sure, but we're going to catch more heat on that, because they're going to tell you, you can't even do your streets, now you want to do the alleys.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So, it's, I think, having, I don't care who it is out here to represent, but to see the bigger picture, and that's kind of, at one point during COVID, now to get off subject, because we ran into a situation where manpower was down, going to those conferences helped us see bigger things that now have fulfilled replacing manpower, and all that, I mean, it's just, you got to see the bigger picture, not just go for the treasures, let's see what else is out there.
Absolutely. In our landfill, when we do get to that point, there's a lot of ways that we can monetize some of the waste on the landfill, there's always going to be methane gas, and there's people that want to buy that methane gas, and pay you for that, we have to collect and do it. They let you monetize the landfill where you can, do some of these paint your projects from find, or from line streets, making sure that you have the best option for citizens as far as trash can.
In the meantime, Councilman Graham, if you keep chasing your trash can, I'd be waiting for the Boston Marathon.
If they have an event, chase trash cans, I think I would. This is a smaller ones, metal ones, it would work very well, either, what you said.
Well, I mean, that's what, that's what three yard, we have the majority of the cost of, maybe three yarders. We do have some four yarders, the four yarders we use for commercial business and for, and the thing about the four yarders is they happen to be a little narrower and taller. It is something that we do, I mean, I, we still get involved regularly, that somebody's usually like trash can, their communal trash cans for up to three residences is what the intent is, but that's not always the case. I can tell you when I go in my alley to throw trash out, there's a lot of times that I run into contractors and I have conversations with them, because if they're throwing trash in there, I tell them they got to get it out, and follow the commercial process. And some are happy, some are willing to do it, and some are not very happy about it.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Okay. We do have executive session, so at this time, we'll go to executive session under Government Code Section five-five-one point oh-seven-one, Consult, consultation with attorney five-five-one point oh-seven-two real estate, five-five-one point oh-seven-four personnel issues, and five-five-one point oh-eight-seven economic development, and it is six forty-seven P.M. and 551.087 economic development. And it is 6:47 PM.
Open session.
Hello, Mr. Garcia. Mr. Garcia?
Yes. Talk to David Garcia?
Yes. Direct me to negotiate with David.
We need my permission.
I have a motion that we allow city manager to try to get into negotiations with David Garcia.
David Garcia? Yes. I have a motion that we allow city manager to try to get into negotiations with David Garcia. David Garcia? Yes. I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Graham, to instruct city manager to talk to David Garcia about our MPO and RMAs. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that motion carries. Do we have any items that we need to discuss at our next city council meeting?
I'd like to... Wendy and Cyrus to talk to Tommy. Domenas or Gonzalez?
Gonzalez.
Gonzalez about... This is where you can talk to him about us finding a way on how we can get an oil and gas representative or an attorney to help us understand projects in the future and the agenda when we have them come to our attention to kind of help us make sure that we're covering all the areas correctly. It's their expertise basically. See how much they will charge for their services.
Or if he's willing to throw in more opinion.
We've got item F7, our noise coordinates.
We'll be ready by the next meeting.
In fact, while we've been here, I did speak with some of the patrol people and nothing's ever been over 70. On the readings that we've taken.
Wow. Number 70 is over 70?
70.
Hasn't been over 70.
Has not been over 70.
Wow.
And just an example, a train whistle within 100 feet is 85.
Yeah.
So that kind of gives you a little bit of...
Yeah. I know we discussed Carvalho back by Dicky, center lane to turn eastward. TechStop said they were waiting for some parts, nothing's been done yet. I'd like to see...
They're waiting and that is supposed to be painted as a chevron. It's not an actual terminal.
It's not?
No. And Nestor spoke to... Spoke to Nestor several months back. And he was waiting for something from TechStop themselves, some type of design. I'd call him to find out where it's at.
Should we petition them to change their mind? We need that turning lane they're going use.
We can ask them, but it would be... It does fall... It would be under their direction. But I definitely could bring it to their attention and ask them.
I'd like to see that.
Anything else for our next meeting?
There aren't too many kids in golf carts, I'd like to discuss this again.
And do we make any progress on the trash can?
I'm working on it. Don't put it on the agenda again.
I'll just...
You're going to bring it up every meeting, aren't you? Just bring it. You get a resolution.
Any other items for our next meeting? Okay. We will adjourn our meeting, it is 7:23 PM.